This conference will now be recorded.
This meeting will be recorded. Here then. Okay, we'll start with a roll call. We will be doing this meeting both online and offline. Some members are online.
All right, signify aye when you hear your name. Diane Kelly?
Aye.
Brian Height?
Aye.
Bill McNair? Alan Tope?
Aye.
I got an aye out of him.
I couldn't hear you there, Alan.
Aye.
Nope.
Nope, still don't have it.
How about now? Aye.
Hmm. Oh, boy. Well, I will move on. David Wilson?
Aye.
Mark Luth?
Aye.
Tony Talarida? Aldifer? And she waved. We have six Planning Commission members. That is sufficient for a quorum.
Do the rules?
These are the rules for remote participation and adequate during the Planning Commission meetings. At tonight's, well, no, we don't have that. Please adhere to the following rules to ensure respectful and orderly meeting. Please leave your microphone or telephone to avoid background noise that may cause interference with the meeting and make it difficult for others to hear. Staff may mute microphones of remote attendees if needed. Public questions and comments will be taken at periodic intervals throughout the agenda. We will start with no time limits, but the Planning Commission Chairman may impose a time limitation if there are many questions or the meeting is running short on time. For in-person attendees, that would be you, please raise your hand to be recognized and then move to the podium when directed and state your name, address, and your comment or question. Please turn on the podium microphone before speaking and then turn it off after done. And that's the little button right in the center as the note will say. Remote attendees, the chat box features will be active throughout the meeting. If you have a comment or question, please type your full name and address in the chat box. And that's the speech balloon icon in the upper right of your screen. When you are recognized and so directed, please unmute your microphone and state your question or comment. And then re-mute, mute your microphone when done. For those who are accessing the meeting by phone only, staff will periodically ask for caller comments and unmute any callers. Callers must identify their name and address prior to making a comment. Once again, your cooperation and adherence to these rules will ensure an orderly and respectful meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Alan, can you try sound again?
Can you hear me now? Yes, no, maybe? Test, one, two.
The difference, because?
Test.
Apparently he can be on go-to meeting, just not in the meeting room.
Yeah, I mean, I get a, I get a perfect view of everybody on the podium.
Okay, we hear you now. How about, just to be sure, Jason?
Jason Engelhardt, can you unmute and let us know you're there?
Can you hear me okay? Good evening.
We hear you.
And?
I can hear you too, Jason.
Great.
Okay.
Isn't technology wonderful?
All right.
When it works.
We'll start with the Pledge of Allegions. Pledge of Allegions, to the United States of America, Republic, which stands nation, I forgot, visible, protection, justice. Hey, Mark, we will go through the agenda today, just in case anybody's interested. The Rue subdivision, they, we will not be hearing that case tonight, so if you're here for that, may not want to continue to attend. But we will start, our first thing is the approval of the meeting minutes from the December 16, 2021 meeting. Are there any comments or changes? Hearing none? Motion to approve? Second.
Second.
Okay. We'll go with Al on that, just to?
Okay.
To start our hybrid.
Yes. Diane Kelly?
Aye.
Brian Height?
Aye.
Bill McNair?
Aye.
Alan Tope?
Aye.
David Wilson?
Aye.
Mark Luth?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
Okay. Moving on to subdivision review. And the one case we have today is Ridge Farm Final Plan Phase 1A. Major Plan 2017-101. This is a request for final plan review. I'm guessing everybody here is here for that. Okay, and we'll start with a staff presentation, then go to an applicant presentation, courtesy of the floor, and then a planning commission decision. So Greg, if you could start with the presentation?
Yes, this is an application to develop the properties located at Huckleberry Road, PIN 548746422139. This plan proposes, one, 30,000 square foot medical office building, the construction of approximately 265 linear feet of Road F, and the north side of the Walbert Avenue Office Center Road intersection, the construction of approximately 240 linear feet of Road G, and the driveway onto Walbert Avenue, the construction of the entire Commercial Village Main Street, the right-of-way improvements along the entire northern frontage of Walbert Avenue east of Cedar Crest Boulevard, and along approximately 515 linear feet of the eastern frontage of Cedar Crest Boulevard, north of Walbert Avenue, and the associated stormwater management facilities on a 9.15 acre portion of the 101.1787 acre tract. The property is zoned R10 and TND Residential Cluster Overlay District, and is being developed as a TND Residential Cluster Overlay. K Walbert LLC is the equitable owner and applicant. And the recommendation of the Community Development Department is that the Planning Commission take the plan under advisement to afford the applicant the time necessary to address the reviewing agency's comments. Our recommendation is contingent upon the applicant granting the township a waiver from the timeframe in which to act upon the plan. The Planning Commission soft deadline to act upon the plan was January 17, 2022. The Board of Commissioners hard deadline to act on the plan is February 16, 2022.
Thank you, Greg. The next thing will turn this over to the applicant, I guess, Jason or Jim?
Yes, if you don't mind. Before I begin, I just want to confirm. Rob, are you plugged in here, Rob Hoffman? Can you hear us?
Yes, yes, I can.
Okay, very good. Then, good evening. Good to be back with you. Obviously, we have Jason Engelhardt, our project engineer. I also have Rob Hoffman, our traffic engineer, and all we want to do this evening, I guess, is give you an update. We understand that the staff has recommended that the commission take it under advisement. But nevertheless, we'd like to take a few minutes to explain to where we, where we are, give you a status, and how we think it's proceeding. And for that, as always, we need to hear from Jason.
Okay, thank you, Jim. If it's possible, could the presenter give me access to the screen? Okay, you can, some member of the board, let me know if you're seeing my screen?
Yeah, we can see it.
Okay, so hopefully you're seeing the plan here. So again, good evening, Jason Engelhardt with Lang and Engineering. This is the second time the Planning Commission is seeing Phase 1A of Ridge Farm. I, you know, I think you guys touched on it before, but the overall preliminary plan was, received preliminary approval back in November of last year. And second time for Phase 1A, which is a little over nine acres of the project area. So this, this area, this piece of the project includes the two main entrances off of Walbert. It includes the, all the streetscape along the frontage of Walbert and extending up a small section of Cedar Crest. Includes the gateway at the intersection of Cedar Crest and Walbert, adjacent to the MOB, the medical office building, and the associated parking and improvements and landscaping there. The main plaza area, and all the sidewalk connections throughout, and the Commercial Village Main Street. So it gives us a lot of the initial infrastructure to build from going forward, with the goal of, of, you know, the items I just discussed, getting those started. Since the last meeting, we went through and addressed the initial round of the township comments on this phase. Two big ones from, from the first submission of Phase 1A was to include a stormwater report specific to just this area, kind of as a subset of the overall approved stormwater report, as well as a limited traffic study, just so you understand the impacts of just this area understood. So we did that. We do have comments related to both of those elements that we're going to work through with, with your engineer, so that's, that's on our to-do list here. In addition, we also submitted more detailed landscape and hardscaping plans that the landscape architect prepared. And I can spend a couple minutes going over those. I reviewed those with Park and Rec on January 10, where they had recommended approval at that point. There's also in your packet some additional architectural elements you can take a look at, specific to the medical office building, the fountain at the intersection here that's, that's being proposed. So before I do that, just to update you quickly on where we are with approvals. The, the, we might have mentioned at the last meeting that we received that Act 167 Consistency, Lehigh Valley Planning Commission, so that's completed. We had filed an NPDS permit for the lower 80 acres of the project, so that includes all of Phase 1A and really everything up to the top of the ridge. And we were just asked to provide clean drawings for that, for the issuance of the permit, so we would expect that in the next week or two. And then if anybody has a question on the HOP, Rob can certainly speak to that, but that's been submitted a number of times, including again recently. And then the sewage planning module for the first phase of the project, all of Phase 1, was approved by the township and has been submitted and is under review with the EP. So that's moving along as well. If I could just take a minute or a few minutes of your time to touch base specifically on some of the detailed landscape plans that were included. So I wanted to just, again, I talked to Park and Rec about this, but I thought the Planning Commission would be interested as well. So this is that Office Center Drive intersection off of Walbert. These are the two rain gardens that are proposed along that frontage. This is our, our entry sign here, you'll see coming off, and there's, there's some details in the, in the set specifically illustrating how that will look. But just to talk about this plaza a little bit, so this is one of the main plaza areas, and it hadn't been this detailed before. The idea of this plaza, a little over a third of an acre, is to allow the use of this for things like a farmer's market or an art show. It'll, it'll be a series of pavers here. There'll be four-by-four paver, so it'll be, you'll have the ability to drive on them, and if you needed to, to set up tents. I think, you know, to kind of wrap around. There's also the ability, if I come in a little bit further, to have a small stage here, and a shade pavilions being provided, kind of as a focal point. There'll be some, some table and chairs that can be moved around, some benches, these kind of semi-circle benches throughout, kind of promote socialization in the area. There'll be some low-level accent lighting throughout, and some attractive landscaping. So, you know, the idea here is to provide a contemporary, a kind of versatile plaza space that can be used by the public and be used by those that are visiting the restaurants within the development, and all to be connected by sidewalk, sidewalk systems throughout. So I really just wanted to take a minute to highlight that, just because you've not seen that detail before. There's one other area I want to highlight, but is there any questions on this before I move past it?
How, what is the size of the plaza?
I think overall, it's about a third of an acre. So, again, it kind of, it connects through the walkways throughout, so there's some additional area outside of that, but the main plaza is about a third.
That one-third acre, does that include the green space, or is that just the paver?
Uh, well, yeah, it's basically the paved, the paver area, right? Including the green space in the center, but, but yeah, this, this paver area is about a third of acre. I know one of the, one of the requests of Park and Rec was that they, the township review the HOA docs, and they have the ability to reserve this space for township programming or events. So there'll be a master association, and it will just have to be coordinated with them.
Yeah, it seems to be a nice public area.
Yeah, I mean, that certainly was the goal here, to make it, to make it an amenity space that people were interested in, in using, and then, you know, there'll be a restaurant adjacent. They'll have it, that'll have its own outdoor seating, but, you know, the people will be able to walk through, and there could be some actual, some meaningful programming here. So the other area. Other I just wanted to touch on was kind of, was the, kind of the gateway to the project here. So this is the medical office building. You know, you'll have at this intersection, a pretty heavily landscaped area here, and some attractive benches. There's a fountain that's proposed here that'll have signage kind of built into the fountain. There's a, I can show you the architectural detail of that, that was, it was, it's in your packet if you want to look at it closer, but, but that's, this will all connect to that, to the pedestrian walkway on either side. So you have that eight-foot concrete path on either side that'll connect you through here, and then up to that other plaza area. So here's the, if you're curious about the fountain, here's what, this was put together by Spillman Farmer, but, you know, this is that fountain area we were just looking at, and here's kind of what the vision of what that might look like from an elevation point of view. So again, all this information's in your, in your packet, you can take a closer look at it. I just wanted to spend a minute reviewing that with you. The, so, you know, again, we're in receipt of, of the review letters. You know, we have some, some comments from, from Mr. Comida on the information I just provided you. For the most part, we've resolved a lot of his comments, but there's a few things that he, having seen new information, has some, some comments for us to address, so we'll work through those. There's just a few items left in hand over engineering's letter concerning some, some soil testing, so we're going to respond to those. I think Tony reviewed his letter and a lot of those comments at your pre-meeting, and I was able to listen to a lot of that. So we're going to work through those with, with him and address those for the next time we're, we're in front of you. So I think that's all I have. What I would, I know Mr. Hoffman, Rob has, wants to touch base, I think, on the road improvements to some degree. So Rob, are you ready to do that?
Yeah, absolutely. Do you, do you have my plan with your exhibits there, Jason, that you can show? There you go.
I do, yes.
Okay, perfect. Maybe zoom in a little bit more. Let's try to tighten that up. Okay, that's, that's good. That should be fun. Okay, good evening, everybody. So yeah, we, I just wanted to touch base with you with respect to the road improvements that will be installed in conjunction with Phase 1A. What you're seeing on the plan there, everything that's highlighted in that, I'll call it that aqua blue color. It's basically all of the infrastructure improvements on the east side of Cedar Crest, so all of Walbert Avenue and the east side of Cedar Crest. And what you're seeing there, those improvements are all of the improvements on that section of roadway that are required per the HOP for the entire project. So the way this is going to be structured with PennDOT is, is there's going to be, it's actually going to be four phases of work that get done. And, and you're looking at what is the first phase. So it's, so everything on the eastern side of Walbert Avenue, so that includes all the widening for the additional turning lanes on that side, the restriping, all the storm structures, there's a significant amount of the stormwater structures that are located along both Walbert Avenue, and then likewise on the eastern side of Cedar Crest Boulevard, all of that infrastructure gets put in place. The, both of the site driveways obviously shown there. At the Office Center Road intersection, that will be signalized, and that signalization is going to occur in conjunction with, with this Phase 1A. And then similarly, at the intersection of Walbert and Cedar Crest, that is an entire new signal installation that's, that's going to occur at that, at that intersection. So all of that signal work, all of that new signal equipment is going to be put in place in conjunction with Phase 1A. And, you know, obviously, you'll have some standards that'll be set back accordingly to accommodate the widening that will happen on the west side, but, but all that, all that infrastructure will be in place that, that it can just be accommodated with the future widening. And then as far as what happens on Cedar Crest to the north of Walbert Avenue, we have, we have widening, so that curb line is being set back to its final, final location. And that's the gore area that you can see, so that's striped as a gore, because obviously, we don't have the additional through lane that will be going up the hill installed yet, so we have to install that in a temporary condition. So it's the curb set at the final, final location, and then at the, at the limit of that, there will be a pavement tie-in that will, that will marry that back into the, to the existing, the existing width of Cedar Crest Boulevard until the, until the additional widening occurs to the north. And then similarly, on the south side of Walbert, same type of situation where that ultimate widening within that section between Walbert Avenue and Office Center Road, that's all being installed and put in place as well. So that curb line set at its final location, and again, that's, that's the reason you see the, the temporary core striping in there, because that's what's ultimately going to become the future right-turn lane, when what is currently the right-turn lane becomes the additional through lane going up the hill. So that's what, that's, big picture, that's what that looks like, just to give you a feel of what happens next, and the way this works with PennDOT is, we've got, we're getting one HOP for the entire project. And what happens in conjunction with that is PennDOT requires security for the entire project, so we're not securing this in phases. It's the entire project, which is, you know, just, just south of $12 million worth of work. So PennDOT will hold security for that full $12 million at the onset of construction. So what happens beyond Phase 1 is we would actually jump to the west side of Walbert Avenue. And that's not, that's not on this plan, but I'm just kind of giving you a sneak peek, so you have an idea of how this is going to play out. The western side of Walbert gets done to the intersection, including the intersection of Walbert and Cedar Crest, so the rest of the work there, and that Phase 2 is going to continue up to the driveways on Cedar Crest Boulevard, is from, from a big picture, what, what that's going to look like. And then Phase 3 is the northern portion of the work on Cedar Crest. So basically, from probably starting up at the Huckleberry intersection, and then moving into the hill, we've got that significant hillcut that's going to occur. That's going to be the, the third phase, and then the final phase is the work to the south of Walbert on Cedar Crest down to 22. So that, just, just to give you a, give everyone kind of a feel of how that's, how that's going to play out, and that's all. You know, those are, those are all the pieces that are in motion with PennDOT, those are the discussions we've had with respect to the HOP, where we are, there, you know, there's, there's a few, few design items that are getting tweaked and massaged at this point, but, but by and large, the design is set. The biggest portion of, of work that they're looking at now are the traffic control plans in conjunction with everything that I just discussed, and the right-of-way acquisition plans. Those are, those are the, kind of the, the big items that has, that's taking up the majority of their focus at this point. So that's, from a, from a high level, that's, that's where we're at.
Okay, anything else?
I have a general, and I understand it's subject to change. Terms of the, the timing of the phases, does the development team have an internal schedule in terms of when they are hoping the subsequent phases occur? I know there's so many variables that can change things, but just seeing if the development team has any sort of schedule.
I, I think I can offer a little background on that. So, you know, I've got the whole project up now. Phase 1, said, the overall Phase 1 breaks at the ridge line. And the, some of the permitting, like, for example, the, the Planning Module, sewage planning module, the request of the township is limited to Phase 1 at this point. So ultimately, we need to, to construct a booster pump for the second phase of the project, a booster pump for the water system. So that takes, that's most of the top of the hill. So the, the plan here is to move from Phase 1A into beginning some of the apartments here. And then we're in discuss, we're discussing now that Phase 1B is, is kind of this area immediately north of that, including these mixed-use buildings and likely the restaurants themselves. So, you know, it's, the overall project timing is likely a 10-year construction timeframe. So how that'll ultimately time out, it's hard to predict at this point. You know, it's a substantial project, it's not going to happen very quickly, but at the same time, we're not intending to stop at any point either. So we're, we're talking about phases, but the intention here is to continue to, the instruction from one, you know, continual construction as we move here, not to stop for any period of time. So, but the next logical piece of this is, is likely going to be the apartments here. You know, so I, I don't know if that answered your question really clearly. We're, we're still ironing that out, but, but you will see a submission for, for a phase, either the remainder of Phase 1 or a Phase 1B shortly, shortly.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions from the Planning Commission?
Sorry, Mark, I have a question here. And I know it's, I'm, I'm jumping ahead. I had a curiosity, I haven't seen a lot of your newest renditions here, but on the west side of Cedar Crest Boulevard at the intersection of Walbert and Cedar Crest, were you relieving the congestion there by widening to the north? You can zoom in on that area? I just didn't know exactly what you guys had in mind.
Rob, do you want to take that?
Yeah, yep, yes, the, yeah, the, the widening, you're talking along Walbert Avenue, correct?
Correct, correct.
Yes, yeah, exactly, yeah, the widening, the widening in that section is occurring along the northern side of Walbert, that's correct.
Oh, I was curious.
Any other questions from the Planning Commission? Okay. Courtesy of the floor.
Good evening. Just to elaborate on that, if the PennDOT is going to do all the stuff?
State your name and?
Oh, I'm sorry, Steve Ridgeway, 3544 Shiloh Court. I'm the president of the Country Crossing Homeowners Association. I'm asking specifically about the Yellowstone. Uh, I'm asking specifically about the Yellowstone and Walbert Avenue. Can you elaborate on that? The right-of-way, uh, right turn only? Uh, I know you said that you were going to do the PennDOT, the entire project. Would that remain right turn only until all the other phases are completed on the western part of Cedar Crest Boulevard?
You're, you're referring to coming out of, yet coming out of Yellowstone?
Yeah, that's going to be the road that's going to go up Yellowstone all the way up to the single townhomes on the west part of Cedar Crest Boulevard. There's 163 homes, townhomes in the Country Crossing Development. The proposal is that you're going to have cars come out on Yellowstone and it's going to be a right turn only.
Correct.
Now, uh, but if you're talking about phases, I mean, that could be six, seven years down the road and we're going to, we're going to keep the Yellowstone the right turn only? When we haven't even done anything with the western part of Cedar Crest Boulevard?
No, so that, that, when that will become the right turn only is when the western, the western side of Walbert gets done. So when that, when that roadwork from, which, you know, which spans approximately from Cedar Crest Boulevard west to, uh, Pond Road, when that work is done, that's when that right turn only restriction will be put in place. Because that, that, that configuration, the reconfiguration of that intersection has to be constructed in conjunction with those improvements on the western side of Walbert.
I'm sorry, that's not going to take place until those phases come about, right? Okay, well, your engineering, uh, uh, Keystone Acquisition Services and Writing keeps telling us that everything has been approved, that they need us to sign off to make that right of way. And you're telling me something completely different.
No, I think what they're, I think what you're taught, they're talking to you about is, is an easement on the sidewalk easement.
Yes, they are talking about an easement, but then they talked about taking care of that easement and then making it a right turn. I'm just making sure that once we sign the documents for that easement control, that that right turn will not take place until that phase of the western part of Cedar Crest Boulevard takes place.
That's, that's correct, yes. The, the, the modification to that intersection and the change of turning movements, let's call it, out of Yellowstone, will not occur until that portion of the roadwork, that, that portion being the roadwork being, the new roadwork being constructed on the western side of Cedar Crest Boulevard. When that section goes under construction, that's when that intersection change would occur.
Okay, then they're going to have to update their documents to state that. Uh, because in their documents, the way they're talking is they wanted to, to do sooner than later. That's it?
And I, I just have a, a general question for township staff. When those future phases come about, um, the developer would provide land development plans for those, those phases, is that a correct statement?
Correct, the, this would be a repeat of exactly what we're going through now. So this is Phase 1A, which is pretty much the area along, uh, the north side of Walbert, uh, east of Cedar Crest. As the phases come in, and as you heard Jason, they might bring in Phase 1B soon. So as they roll through the approvals, each phase will have to individually go through its own approval process um, through you guys, to the Board of Commissioners, and then, uh, clear up every condition of approval before recording the plan. And only once that part of the plan is recorded, then can they actually pull permits related to that part of the plan. So that's how it's going to roll through the entire project.
Greg, if you would just confirm for, um, the public's information, the phase we're talking about right now is the medical office building.
That is correct, Phase 1A, as, as you can see on the plan there, uh, is basically the medical office building, the intersection at Office Center Road, the right-in, right-out driveway, um, between Office Center Road and Cedar Crest Boulevard, and the, um, the main street there, which parallels Walbert, uh, immediately to the north. So you have the medical office building and two access points serving it. And that's what Phase 1A is.
Okay, yes, yes.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Sean Hubler, 1115 North 30th Street, Allentown. Um, two questions, one, why is there even a medical complex of 30,000 square feet being planned when there's all these medical offices all over the place? You have that Care 1 or whatever it is at Cedar Crest in Tillman that was up there. You got Coordinated Health and two blocks up the street from Coordinated Health on the same side of the road, you have another medical office. And then on top of that, all of the stuff that's back by the Roma Building that's in the 14 and 1500s of those medical offices, those aren't even full to capacity. And so I'm wondering why there's, there's this, such a forward push to accommodate yet another medical facility when we have so many medical office spaces unfilled now? And my only feeling that I can come up with is, is that K builders would collect the rent from that instead of somebody else. But I don't know why you keep specking out more, more space like that when it's redundant at a time when there's open office space all over and you're allowing them to just build out more office space, especially on a portion of that corner where it's the lowest part of the whole thing and it's like a basin and it floods. And y'all know that you've seen water come right across from where the proposed medical office is located, will be located, I guess, to that intersection. And I'm, I just, the, the intensity of, of this project just upsets me to my core. And I've talked to Greg about it and that y'all know where I stand on this. But I'm, I'm curious as to how K builders went from being home builders like Trio Fields up in Nazareth and other projects that they have to all of a sudden, we're building these so-called TND villages? And you have a, an entire so-called commercial village. I never heard of a commercial village. I thought of a village was a, a mellow place where people live and then there's commercial areas. I never heard of a commercial village. And, and I mean, like, the, the impact of this is to utterly change the entire nature of South Whitehall. Irreplably, irrevocably, forever. You know, like any, anything of bucolic farmland or, or open space or even being able to breathe in the summer with the fumes that come off of 22 and you got a 10-year buildout where you're going to do the roadwork at night like they did on 22 and have that heavy equipment running. And then you're going to have bulldozers and all kinds of dump trucks and big yellow stuff running all day long, belching diesel into the air and ripping out the woods when all we hear on TV right now is ecological this and that and carbon capturing. Along with the status of the wildlife, along with the status of just what this township is. I, I really think this needs to be looked at. And I understand Greg went into great length that those things which are on allowed use by the state of Pennsylvania. I, I, I understand that the builder may do whatever the state of Pennsylvania says is allowed. But when it comes to a project of this magnitude, encompassing 190 acres and so much commercialization, I won't even see the stars at night. I, I just think that this needs to be reviewed in a different way. And instead of the worst possible use for this area, I would propose a far less dense and far more intelligent approach to the entire project. I feel that you're beholden to K builders. I feel like my life is run by K builders. I got this card in mail two days ago. Greg was kind enough to tell me he sent it out something like 12 days ago, but now we have like snail mail. So I get, I get, Tuesday I get this card. I start getting heart palpitations, I'm standing here still having them. Because I, I can't believe that they can come in and change 27 intersections from Myersville to E-Mass. Why is this builder being given so much jurisdiction over our lives? Look at this crowd, nobody in here is under 50. I'm sorry, but I'm picking on you, but I'm, I'm over 50. We've put our whole life savings into this place and thought it would be nice. And then at the end, you get this. I'll be breathing diesel smoke for the rest of my life. You know, I already retired out of Hubco 15 years ago, I don't need it. And there's just no consideration for farmland preservation, open space. Then you're saying you have this little stage here and we're going to have art shows. Do we need this? These people don't want it, I don't want it. And I know your hands are tied, you tell me, because you sit on the board, but you have to do things according to the laws of the state. But I just think there are some issues, big, huge issues about this project. And under the, and I'm going to blurt it out because I got to get it off my chest so my heart rate comes down. The previous administration did an awful lot, you know this, to accommodate K. To, to where people came up here and said, if you, if you have a land ordinance, why are you doing all these, all these permits and, or, or these variances and these amendments? To accommodate that, you have a land ordinance, stick with the land ordinance. And when you have something this big, I don't know if this is being looked at by Lehigh Valley Planning Commission, but it, it's just, it's just too much. And then my other little bit of beef here is you're talking about carving off the top of the hill at Huckleberry Road like it's nothing. I used to do that kind of work on sites for several years I was out there doing it. I don't know how many 10-yard loads, truckloads of soil and dirt and rock is going to go, but you're actually doing so much excavating that you're weakening the rock, you're dropping the water table, and I can tell you, and I'm just going to make a public complaint right here. When I moved into my house when I was a kid, I had an upper level, a slope and a lower level and a split level. So, okay, and it was kind of flat. My neighbor across from my driveway has a big lower yard and it was basically flat. Since, maybe 10 years since Target went in and they reconfigured that and they put a pumping station next to where Applebee's is and it's so deep, you could put three Applebee's in that hole, if you calculated it and looked at it. And now I have all kinds of divots all over my yard. It's so uneven that with all the snow and rain we had, I can't even walk through my yard. There's places where there's six-inch deep depressions in my yard and I'm soaked up to my ankles if I walk out there dressed like this without boots on. Now, why, why is it because there's a cone of influence? It's not what you see on the map. There's a watershed cone, it can go out two miles from the buildout, which means since I'm only a mile south of this, my yard's going to roll and roll and roll until I have a sinkhole in my yard. And I don't think it's fair. And I don't like to hear that things were unforeseen when consulting engineers go out there and look at the things that will be unforeseen and that's what they get paid to look at. I, I just, that the magnitude of this is far too much impact. And it's, it's, it's just too much. And a lot of it is stuff we don't need. I don't need an art show, I don't need a fountain, I don't need, I don't, I don't get it. I, maybe I'm getting old and stupid, but I, I just never, ever, ever expected this to turn into my so-called first-class township. I'm sorry.
Thank you for your comments.
Okay, I'm long-winded, but.
John, I know who you are, but could you state your name and address for the record?
Yes, Sean Hubler, 1115 North 30th Street, Allentown, PA.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Are there any other comments?
Uh, Steve Benton, 1407 Spring House Road, Allentown. With regards to traffic, I realize that this project has probably been reviewed for the past two, three, four years. The traffic studies have to be at least that old. Um, I think we found that most of the traffic studies are, have been incorrect in the past, uh, especially on Walbert Avenue, back where region, the, uh, over 55 community is. We, uh, the commission and the board, uh, took uh, exception to the studies that were done for the, I think it was called Parkview. And right now, if I go leave my house on Spring House Road, go to Walbert, make a right turn sometime between 3:30 and 4:30 in the afternoon, it'd take me 45 minutes to get to Cedar Crest Boulevard. If you look to the right, Cedar Crest Boulevard is backed up to almost Pennsylvania. And on the other side of the street, it's backed up too. Perhaps the traffic studies that were done two years ago say that this is enough. But that's what they said when they built Route 22 in 1955. And obviously they were wrong then, they're still wrong now. And, um, Walbert Avenue is going to be a Route 22. And, um, I think the commission should be able to say to them, we need an updated study and we need a good futuristic view of what it's going to be. And if it's not going to be feasible, then they can't do the magnitude that they're asking to do. They can do something else, perhaps build big homes there and on two-acre lots. And he said, they're making a big deal of a third of an acre. Hey, my house sits on four tenths of an acre. And I'm not having any art shows or public things there and it's not big enough. It, it's, uh, it's good PR, that's about it.
Thank you. Any other comments? I'm sorry, could you?
Jeff, I think you're unmuted, you should be able to speak now.
Name is Jeff Epstein. My, uh, office address is 3900 Hamilton Boulevard. Uh, it's in South Whitehall Township. Uh, the question I raise is putting a medical office building so close to the corner of Walbert and, uh, Cedar Crest. And in a medical office building, generally you want parking as close and convenient for patients. Parking on four sides of a building is better than remote, one side to the north. And it looks to me that you're, that you have a dotted line showing a proposed building, I can't quite read it from your plan, to the east of the medical building. Is that what is planned there, a future building? I can't read what it says.
Yes, there's, there's a, there's a, a future restaurant in that location.
You don't think you're putting 10 pounds, uh, into a five-pound bag here? I mean, it pushes your, your parking for medical people far away, but on the. I mean, it pushes your, your parking for medical people far away, but on a very, on a very busy corner, you're proposing a 30 or 40-foot, I can't read the, the, the small print, high, high building, a three-story or four-story building, right up against the corner? Not really good. I mean, you've, Walbert's a, a very busy street. You're adding all this traffic for this phase. Plus, when you look at what you're, what the future phases that are being run through this, this main drive that's over here with rights in, right, and, and rights out, seriously? Any comments from the planner?
The, the, the medical office building is, it's three stories. The location of the parking relative to the, to the medical office building follows what was, was laid out in the traditional neighborhood design ordinances, where the parking is, is intended to be behind the building or to the side of the building, not, not in front. So your view shed is the building. And it's set back from Walbert at least 50 feet as well here. So I can offer you that.
Wait, I'm sure you're, you're obviously the meeting that clear site triangle requirement. So what about a large amount of traffic that's coming up and down Cedar Crest Boulevard and you're adding to it, and the additional traffic you're adding to on Walbert? When people start flying down the street there, as they will, that's, that's a pretty tough intersection.
Thank you.
That's my questions and comments.
Or any others, Dave? Okay. Any other questions or word? I think we, we need a extension of the time from the applicant. You agree to that?
Yeah, okay, just make sure my mic was on. Yes, I'll, I'll get ahold of Greg and we'll, we'll work that out. That's, that's not going to be a problem.
Okay, take a motion from the planning commission takes this under advisement?
Removed.
Moved by Diane, seconded by Brian.
Hey, roll call vote. Diane Kelly?
Aye.
Brian Height?
Aye.
Bill McNair?
Aye.
Alan Tope?
Aye.
David Wilson?
Aye.
Mark Luth?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Okay, we will move on to agenda item number four, transportation infrastructure update.
Good evening. Sure report tonight. There's not a lot going on. And that's finished up all their planning, their kind of work with the weather, cleaning up roadways. But we'll look forward to things starting to happen again in spring.
Okay. Thank you, Tony. Next on the agenda is a, is the planning commission annual report. Great.
Well, that was submitted to everyone via email, I believe, Tuesday evening, was it? So basically, that's the report. It's pretty much our typical, what's becoming our typical report of a briefing of what the planning commission did meeting-wise last year. A slight review of their, of your goals and aspirations for 2021. And then finally, of course, the goals and aspirations for 2022, which I would like to have, if you could, give us some suggestions tonight. And then the last thing, of course, was the more detailed, meeting-by-meeting approach that fills the last six pages, I believe. So if you're okay with that, and if you wish to give us some ideas for what the planning commission wants to accomplish in 2022, once you do that, then you can either recommend the, recommend that we send that on to the board of commissioners, or if you prefer, bring it back next month and see it again.
Okay, let's see what we have. First, are there any comments on anything else besides the, the goals? I, I had no comments on that. But let's just review then the, the goals and aspirations for 2021, just to start there. Is, is to complete and adopt the comprehensive plan in progress. I think that's going to continue.
I hope so.
Likewise, to complete and adopt the new official map.
Would it be fair to say that really is contention on completing the comprehensive plan?
I'm sorry, what?
Yeah, Al, you are correct. Yes, you wouldn't adopt the official map until the comp plan has been adopted.
Yes, correct.
Might, might it be appropriate to sort of defer that to 22?
Will these, give me 23?
Well, or 23, aye.
Well, we maybe put, maybe we should just put that complete and adopted new official map after the comprehensive plan is complete?
Yes, I mean, if we're all hopeful, we can, you know, put that as a goal and aspiration for 2022.
Yes, so, but maybe put that, that follows the.
Yep, following the comp plan.
And, and then start the zoning ordinance review likewise?
Likewise.
Yes. And then update the sidewalk inventory is completed. Is there anything else to do with that?
We just have to keep up continually updated as new sidewalks get constructed. Earn Robert Emmanuel, that was helping us with a lot of effort. I've heard he actually therein, one of the things we do have to talked about.
Do we, we, we want to have some kind of report on it, or is that what you're suggesting, or?
No, I, I, I think it's just a matter of, what we can do is we can start by releasing it.
Okay, and so it'll be available on the web.
We'll put a link. We, we might want to look at it first to have worked out any bugs. You know, I can catch all kinds of bugs. What we'll do? Yes. Okay. There's a, what we'll do is we'll set up a group in our online account for planning commission members and then.
Might be a good idea to, you know, get updates in terms of sidewalk deferrals that were called in and to see progress, if progress.
So I can give an update on that. There was sent up a follow letter, follow-up letters to the Tillman Square area. Follow up on the letters that George put out. Days, St. Luke. Heard from Square. Harry Two is in there as well. Cracker Sport Road. Looking at, at that, I haven't sent the letters out yet. Calling in deferrals is kind of the call it in and say you have 90 days. Put it in ourselves and bill you and things like that. That's not set up, so it's kind of a little.
Okay, does it make sense to have like a, a process or a procedure?
Absolutely.
And so maybe we, is that a goal to, I mean, we have the inventory now is to, to create a procedure or process to continually update it?
Yeah, and it, it's something that we're working with the BOC. Stay tuned.
Okay. So we'll, we'll have a, keep that as a continuing goal for planning commission? Or, or do you think we've completed it as far as?
As far as the inventory? I think the inventory is complete. And maintaining it. Yeah, and maintaining it. And that's, I mean, what we have is, we have. Caught up now?
Would the goal be to review the, the progress?
I don't know that it needs to be a goal. An ongoing process.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so we, we don't need to continue that, you don't think, as far as?
I don't think.
Okay.
I have a related question, now that we're talking about sidewalks. And maybe this is a question for Tony. When we ask them to do counts, do we ask them to do pedestrian counts? Usually it is included. I know that even when we do counts, we do mark pedestrians, bikes and trucks separately. This was a PENDA report I would have to go through and check to confirm that this one was done that way. But usually, it is done, now normally with it being state highways, you, you don't have a lot of that. If it was a college or a school, you would have more. Yeah, well, what I'm specifically talking about is the warehouses are becoming online. And the senior care, Parkland Manor is online. And I drive Cracker Sport to Housman every morning going to work, and I'm seeing more and more pedestrians. So calling in the sidewalk along Cracker Sport by the trucking terminal, I think is, there's more and more people getting off the bus at Ridgeview and 309 and walking down Housman to the warehouses and to Parker Manor. And I think there's a big push, especially by the planning commission here, to Lanta. We always, we always reference Lanta. We always like to see bus stops versus development. So I think that, um, the push that's being made right now is good to kind of make that connectivity.
Right, okay. Right, and the last one from last year was continue community outreach and education. It seems, it's in progress. Continue, just continue it?
I, I would like that. Have us put the Pennsylvania municipalities planning code on our website. I was looking at it today and I thought that would be a good base of state law for our residents that want to educate themselves. A lot of our stuff is triggered by the state, that we don't necessarily do it ourselves. It's, because it's mandated. So I think that would be a good in the app.
So in the chat, they couldn't hear me on, online. That microphone's not very good. So in addition to the MPC, there's also a series of planning documents that the state puts out. So we can put a link, like an information page. And either references their page, because it's pretty well set up. That way, we don't have to duplicate the work, but that would certainly be a, something that we can do.
Because the, the one that the PA D E C D puts out is 70 pages, but it's not that. It's zoning section, so it's not that.
Yeah, so a lot of the planning.
Down to what you need to.
They're like planning explanation documents as opposed to the MPC, which is not fun to read. But the other ones are a little more user-friendly. That it's, they'll reference the MPC, so it gives a good picture of the process and every, you know, zoning and, and land use. So that, that's all in there. So we can put a link to that, and that'll help with that education and outreach.
Okay, so we'll, we'll continue that goal, and, and one part of it is putting the information on, on the web. Does anyone have any other goals or aspirations for the planning commission? Yes? Okay.
Considering this is supposedly a 10-year buildout, and I live two blocks off of Cedar Crest. I'm at 30th and Highland. And you come out of Highland and like the other gentleman mentioned from Spring House, you try and come out at 3:30 in the afternoon. You can't even get out to make a right turn. If you want to make a left turn, don't. You make a right turn and go up a street or two until you can whip around and, and make, you know.
Excuse me, we're on planning commission goals and aspirations now.
Oh, okay, but so, so my other, and I don't know if this ties into it, correct me if I'm wrong. What will Cedar Crest Boulevard look like in the stretch between just south of 22 and Cedar Crest up to Trexler Park, when you take all that front footage on either side and you take the whole Eucolic look of whatever it is and all the features and down in the hollow and up by McDonald's and, and all? It's just going to look like the commercialized strip and it's not going to feel homey anymore. And if you think it's bad trying to get on Cedar Crest now, it's wild. It'll be worse then. It'll be four lanes and, and then all this other stuff that'll be incurred by this project.
Okay, so do you have a goal or aspiration that you're looking for us to do?
Yes, scale the whole thing back and, and make it a little bit more realistic would be cool, but I don't think that's going to happen. But that's just, I'm just asking, what do you think that's going to look like in a few years? Because I, I have this horrible idea that it's not going to look anything like what I thought home was.
At what point tonight were we discussing Cedar Crest Boulevard, south of 22, to Tillman Street?
I'm sorry?
At what point tonight did we discuss improvements to Cedar Crest Boulevard?
I, I think I just, what, what got it started was because I saw that you're going to take all that stuff on the west side, just south of Walbert, all the way to 22, and there's going to be widening of Cedar Crest there. So I'm thinking at some point in time, it's just going to keep being widened.
What would make you think that that would be widened? I, yeah, just that we haven't spoke about it or, or suggested that that was a possibility. I don't know that anybody here knows what's going to happen in 10 years south of Cedar, south of 22.
Do you think they ought to maybe think about that, so that it's not so horrendously changed?
I think that's why they go through their comprehensive plan now, so that they can dictate where they think growth will occur.
Okay, we'll, we'll do that on the comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other goals or aspirations from the Planning Commission? All right, Greg, so do you have what you need then for?
I believe I do.
Okay. That's the.
Would, would you like me to bring it back next month, or you find me just listing the goals as you've elude, enunciated and just then pushing it on to Board of Commissioners? Up to you.
Which plan, I, I'm, I'm okay with, maybe review the final draft.
Up to you, if you want to give me a motion or, you know.
A motion to have a final draft for next month?
I can.
Okay. All right.
Very true.
Okay.
You want to vote, or just all in favor?
Aye.
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 Al?
There's enough.
Okay.
Okay, that's what we'll do. We'll do it up, bring it back, and you can take it from there.
Okay. All right. Item six is the comprehensive plan update. Can you move that microphone over?
We're still waiting on our wireless mics that we're supposed to be in at the end of December. Yes, they're probably stuck in a port somewhere.
Yep.
So for the comprehensive plan update, what I wanted to kind of cover tonight is the next meeting will be going over goals and objectives. So one of the things in the goals and objectives section of the working outline is a list of goal, the guiding principles, and then there's also the zoning purposes, which the MPC references as goals and objectives. Then what was missing in your document was the 2009 comp plan goals and objectives, but those will be coming as an update for that working outline. One of the things I wanted to make you guys aware of is we summarized or just took the first heading of each of those goals. But there's more information in the comprehensive plan, so in general terms, as you're reviewing these goals and objectives, if you want more information or more context, go to the document that's referenced. So the 2009 comp plan is where most of those cross references are and more information. So when we get together for the prioritization exercise of these goals and objectives, you guys have the big picture. You'll also make something may strike something that you really want to have something out of, like, that was not highlighted in the comp plan, but you want to bring that out and bring it forward as a priority. So use the, the, the working outline as a guideline, and if you want more information, refer to the documents that is, that it's referring to. That way, we can hit the ground running and get through this prioritization and start moving on to the next pieces. With that, I wanted to run a drive, a test run of the prioritization tool that we're going to try and use, so now I have to jump over to my computer and set that up.
Okay.
A poll everywhere, so what it is, is it's an online interactive polling software. So if you go to, you can use a smartphone, or if you have a computer, you can go to the poll ev.com slash civic pants oh three six. I didn't pick that name, that was randomly generated. And prioritize, who do you think's going to win the Super Bowl? And the way it works is there's sliders, and you can go through and move an item up or down. And then it'll, it should update once you go through it. So what we'll do at the, at the workshop is, assuming this all works and we can get through it, we'll have a list of all the goals and objectives, and the Planning Commission will prioritize, and this will give us a, an idea of what the Planning Commission thinks is most important.
Dave, what's the wifi here? That?
Open the window.
Open the window.
Ah, okay. Password?
Open the window asterix. O N W.
Open the window asterix.
Good, long, complicated, easy to remember.
Oh, is that for the?
Yeah. Reprogram all. Hey, there's some Bills fans out there.
Oh.
Bet against Tom Brady.
Start survey, is that? Is this, am I at the right place? Just say.
Retire.
Start survey. Okay, where are the Eagles? Eagles aren't on here. How come?
You're a week late, Bill.
Okay, so we want to say who's going to win.
I'm in the order too.
Yeah. Yeah, you can move them all around.
Go through this process, those priorities, I should probably be closer to the mic. Those priorities, we will take those as staff, and we will kind of consolidate everything, because there's going to be overlap in the goals. So we'll combine things that make sense to combine, and then at that next meeting, we come back with that cleaned up version of the goals and objectives. The other thing to think about when you're reviewing goals and objectives is what's missing. There may be something that we talked about throughout the process that you want to bring up, the so, you know, I have a couple ideas, and I'll bring them up at the meeting. There's also, when you look at it, there's goals and objectives, and then I think it's called recommendations. Some of those are more an implementation item. So the other part of this exercise is we'll be going through the goals, objectives, statements, I think is what they call it, and we'll be marking them whether it's implementable or not. So we'll, we will use these implementable statements and create implementable actions that will then go into the implementation piece of the comp plan. But this is what I'm hoping to use at the next workshop for the Planning Commission to prioritize, and we can, we'll have discussions after, after we're done with the exercises. So it looks like the Bills are going to win.
I picked the Bengals.
Okay, and that's all I got. Thank you.
Okay. All right, that's the comprehensive plan update. The agenda item seven is, by the way, anything else on comp plan, any? Okay. Agenda item seven is courtesy of the floor. Do we have any, any additional comments from the floor? Or? Can we raise our hand?
I did.
Oh, okay. I guess next month?
Next month. All about tacos. Thirty-seven, thirty-seven fifty, Hamilton Boulevard, all about tacos.
All about.
Except it's all one word, so I think you say it, all about tacos.
Is that like their website too?
Uh, it's, it's, I believe, a taco restaurant, replacing the Carmel Cafe. Yes, it is. So that's, that's, as far as I know, the only application for February. I'm getting these rumblings like March will be a very busy agenda.
Oh, okay.
Yes, oh. Well, you can, you can access remotely now. Yes.
All right. Anything else, Greg?
I think that's all I have now.
Okay, and so our comp plan meeting is February 8th. And our next Planning Commission meeting is February 17th, I believe. All right. Motion to adjourn. Okay, we have most adjourn second. Anyone opposed? We're, we're done.
Nay.